There will be five, but tonight I can tell you that won't be. So, your choice if you decide to adjourn it. There's no penalty. None of you has been up before, at least not in this decade. And you won't have to notice again. But I really can't direct you on this one way or the other. I'm just advising you so you don't get it jabbed any way around. Okay? So that is, I hope, not too more preliminary. We'll go ahead with the agenda. And the first one on the agenda is Andrew and Jessica Reese on Second Morley.
Evening.
Evening.
Hey, Mike. You want the easy?
Yes.
Easy as a hickory. Ah, we're okay if you guys can sit through here. Don't worry.
Sure. Yeah, okay. I mean, we've got this other thing.
So, um, so this application is originally intended to be a new deck.
Could you just give us your name for the record?
Yes.
And do you have the, um...
I do have the brand name, sorry.
Okay, if you could just drop them by the village office at some point.
Absolutely. I'd like to grab them, but they were no. Uh, sorry. So this is, uh, the application was originally intended to be a new deck. Um, off the back of the existing residence there is an existing deck that's there now that is in unsaid condition, needs to be removed. And the idea was to replace it with a new deck. That would be a little bit more usable for family. There is an existing concrete patio. Our idea was to locate the new deck on top of the concrete patio so that we didn't impact any coverage requirements. Unfortunately, as we went through the application process with the planning board, we found out that the patio was not documented. So, we're also here to legalize that patio. The patio is now, even though the deck was the catalyst, the patio is now really the driver for the variances that are required, which are our coverage and rear yard. The coverage, as you can see, is a good-sized lot, but you can see by the footprint, the house itself is fairly large, so it does take up a good portion of the footprint. So, any improvements would probably require a variance. Again, we are keeping the patio to minimize the impact. The patio itself is at grade level, so there's minimal impact to the surrounding properties. The neighbors to the east and west have provided, which I've included in the package, have provided acceptance statements. And the neighbor that's really affected by the rear yard, rear, not owner, rear...
Or...
...congratulate, rear yard, that's one of those, is a multifamily. It's a condominium, and it's well set back from the property line. There's also a six-foot fence that runs along that property line, and it's pretty well screened.
Okay. Um, I've got a couple. One observation is that your, you know, your numbers are fairly high.
Again, I think the driver to that is the size of the house on the lot itself.
Well, they agree.
But again, any improvement from that point would require a variance, and we have an unsafe condition with the deck.
I've put out and looked at the deck, and I think there are two children in the house at least.
Correct.
And I understand that completely. So, I was not going to go into that.
I didn't.
But I'm a little mystified, and maybe I'm missing something basic that I should know. But if your patio is already, I mean, it was not legalized...
Yes, it preceded the car office, but...
Yes, I heard that the other day. Thank you for affirming that. If the patio would increase the coverage by 628 square feet over what's been documented and legalized, right?
Right.
The patio is already there.
Correct.
If you put a deck over part of the patio, how does that increase the coverage?
It doesn't.
Well, it doesn't, your numbers.
Well, no. The only, the coverage increases only for the patio. It's shown as existing, but it's not documented, so that's why there's an increase in coverage for the patio itself. In fact, it doesn't count its coverage because it's...
I'm confused.
Me too.
A documented real concrete patio, existing zero square feet. Existing deck to be removed, 198 square feet. So, you took that 198 off, but you added 628 square feet. To Bruce's point, if you put the deck just over the existing patio, there wouldn't be any change in the numbers.
In the coverage number.
In the coverage numbers. You have a problem because, well, I mean, you're a lot of variance anyhow, but you have a problem because you're expanding the deck.
We're not expanding the deck, so I'm going to try to talk through this. It was very confusing even for the planning board, so... The rear concrete patio, existing is zero. Proposed is 628.
Existing is existing, we call it, is the zero. But it's there. And it's 628 square feet right now.
Correct, so it's listed as proposed. This, I went back and forth with the planning board on this. It's listed as proposed because we're proposing to legalize it.
Right, I got that part. Okay, but you've got 628 square foot of coverage sitting there right now, right?
Correct, yes. It's existing.
And then you're going to put a deck over part of that.
Correct.
How does that add to coverage?
The only coverage is the patio, the 628 for the patio.
So, the deck should have nothing to do with coverage.
Correct.
Either you're removing of it or you're adding it.
Neither.
Right.
Right, we're taking down the existing deck, but the new deck is going over the patio. The patio is already covered.
But I think if you look at your numbers, you're including, in your total column, you're including the patio, which is already there, then you're removing the existing deck, adding the new deck, and that adds to your coverage number.
Right, but my new deck is zero.
So, let me try. I think I got it, but you can tell me if I'm wrong. He's carrying the existing is zero, so his current is 3339 square feet.
Not counting the patio.
Because he's carrying the, he's carrying the deck, which is existing, which actually is there and legal. He's not counting the not-legal patio.
Right.
And then when he adds in the existing, he's showing an increase of coverage of 668, 628. So, the new total is 3967, which is the existing...
But he counts the deck in the original number?
Yes, because it was there and it was legal.
But then...
Existing.
But it's over the patio.
But it's over the patio.
I don't know why, but...
But that shouldn't be right, then you shouldn't be adding 628.
It should be subtracting.
Right.
It shouldn't have any effect at all, the coverage.
Right.
The deck doesn't have any effect with the coverage. He's just showing you he's adding the patio, the concrete patio, and what you're saying is he should be subtracting the difference because the deck is already there and it's the same coverage.
Right.
So, really, the increase is the size of the deck, which I can't see, which would be...
That's sweet.
By the way, you could hire me for the next, I'm proposing the deck.
The deck was, the existing deck, which is decrepit, is 198.
198, so if you subtract the 198...
The new deck, so on the notice, the new deck is 432 square feet, so on the application.
So, really, the increase is 628 minus 198 would be the, would be...
The net add.
The net add.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I still think you're double counting. If you count the deck and the patio as separate elements of coverage.
Yeah.
Right, so I think if you subtract...
I think for coverage, we just take the patio.
Right.
Right, 628.
They're in a condition where they have a legal this house.
Right.
Who's worried about the house? And a patio that's not legal.
Right.
Right? If you just legalize the patio, then you're adding, adding 628 not to what's there, but to what's legal.
Yes.
Right.
And the deck numbers are irrelevant.
Correct, so I'm subtracting, put the 198 for the existing deck, and I basically, basically what you're saying was that shouldn't be deducted. It should be the 628 as the total.
Right, you shouldn't deduct the 198, you shouldn't add the 432.
Correct. I don't think I'm adding the 432, but again...
Okay. Um, so if you just have that as your number, you're over, like, something like 30% I think.
It's a net increase of 14%, right? Correct.
Well, you're taking 14% of the...
Of the total.
Of the total lot size, in fact.
Correct.
I mean, your excess is over, over what's permitted.
Right.
You know? And what's permitted is something like 2,000, and you're well over that now, right?
If none of this was here, we'd be all right.
Got it. I think, I think it's more than 30, actually. It's almost 40%. Which, I mean, it is a patio that is causing you the numbers problem.
Correct.
The patio is flat, and as you say, it's nothing to compare with anything.
Correct.
But the numbers, the numbers are fairly high. On the setback issue, the rear yard setback, again, the patio is not legal, but it's there.
Correct.
And you're adding the deck or replacing the deck with a new and stately deck. Does not add to the encroachment to the rear yard either, if you assume the patio is already inflated.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, as you said, I think at the outset, legalizing the patio is basically what this was about.
Correct.
Do you know what it was put in?
So, we bought the house three years ago, and we were told it'd been there probably for at least a decade. So, no, is the short answer.
And it is a paved patio set into gravel dust, so it's not, it's not a concrete patio. It's not a solid, it's not a solid piece.
Yeah. Okay. About your questions from other board members?
Your material, your stated proposed deck is 200, or 199.75, is that a mistake?
No. That's probably net after removing the existing.
So, it's an increase, 200. Is the proposed deck is...
No, sorry, that 199, that's the elevation.
Oh. Where did you hear that, John?
That's the elevation. That was the planning board report.
Never can tell who those guys are. Okay. All right, thoughts or questions from my colleagues?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, you want to put a stable deck that you can walk on over the patio?
Correct. With stairs down to the patio.
Right.
It also acts...
But there was, there were some stairs to the patio there, if you recall.
Correct.
That was like Bruce, I didn't walk up.
That's why you're here.
Well, the very pleasant young lady that answered the door was afraid I wanted to come in, and I said, "No, no, no, I don't want to." Okay.
Anything from either of you folks? Anybody in the audience want to be heard? Okay. Um, you know, we get a lot of these not-legalized situations, and it's always the fault of the people on the house that have the people coming in. And I, you know, I accept that things like that occur. The patio is not intrusive, would not be in a position where it would give anybody any side difficulty in terms of logging views or anything of that sort. And I do think that the existing deck is a hazard and has to be replaced, and you're replacing it in a way that's larger, but not fully take up as much, or put in as much coverage as the patio itself. So, although your numbers are clearly not good, they're not good now, and this won't add anything to it as far as I can see. So, I will, with a little bit of the itch in my conscience, but not to stop me, I will make the motion to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote for the right, John.
Yes.
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 Okay. I know you're not leaving.
No.
What's the bother you? I hope your wife's made of soup. I'm not going to ruin my mind as a... I can hold that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Next up is, is that YouTube, Stapper's?
Yes. Architect's application. So, the rest of your residents, this is...
Is your mailing still on your desk somewhere?
It is, yes.
Yes.
I've been building departments while I was in the class. This is a, the existing one-and-a-half-story residence located adjacent to, on the north side, adjacent to, sorry, on the east side, adjacent to the aqueduct and off of Farmer Lane and on Meadowbrook Road. The owners want to expand the house. We're going to do a one-story addition to the rear. We're going to raise the existing one-story, one-and-a-half-story piece to a two-story residence and keep the existing one-story additions on the inside. The variance is required here for the front yard, which is for a new, a relooking air conditioning pad. Also here for an increase in our coverage on the new apartment and the front yard, which is to extend the existing, to put a new coverage entranceway.
And I have an entranceway there already, I'm sure.
Yes.
And the one that you propose will extend out through the front of the house five feet.
From the face of the house, but basically where the existing one is now.
Okay, so what are you adding there? In terms of coverage or encroachments?
It's going to be a little bit larger. The, it's not going out further, it's sideways, correct. But it's going to be, it's going to be a larger coverage entranceway.
Okay, so your number now is mostly 30 feet under the reg, and to the house, to the front of the house, it's 34 and two-and-a-half inches. It's probably 35. John, you're right. Okay. Yeah.
35 feet is required.
Right.
Existing is 342.
Right, okay, so you're under by nine-and-a-half inches at this point.
Correct.
That's the front of the house. The existing entryway landing is already also five feet in front of the house, so your existing landing is 29 and two-and-a-half, opposed to...
Already, correct.
So, what you're doing is you're taking the existing landing and adding it sideways, so you have more than's 29 and a half, not 34 and change.
Exactly, but that line is still the same length.
The front line.
The 29 and two.
Okay. Now, the one story you're adding, adding in the back, that is... Remind me what's under there now?
Nothing. It's, that's where the air conditioning pad is now.
Okay, and that you want to move into the side yard encroachment?
Correct, so that we can build that addition. The other option would be to put the pad in the pack, in the backyard.
Yeah.
But again, we have, thanks to the planning board, a 22-inch beach tree here that has a 35-foot diameter root zone. So, they wanted to keep any encroachments out of that root zone, even though it's a pad that's on grade. But we had to also, if you could see here, we had to move the retention wells outside, further out onto the root zone. And the idea was that if we're going to just be doing that much disturbance, that we could move that AC pad out to the side.
And where are the retention wells?
The retention wells. The stowaway, stowaway retention wells.
And show me where they are in your map.
Right, there's three really, the catch basin, and then there's three retention wells.
Why does that, I'm sorry, why does that preclude putting the AC pad in kind of between the wells and the, I mean, you're just digging them up to cover the grass?
Right, only because of the amount of disturbance. It's really the only part of the yard that they have that's, you know, open to the grass. And there'll be an inspection port, and there'll be a, you know, the retain, the catch basin, the grate, the catch basin, so it was, they were trying to minimize the disruption to that part of the yard. And the side yard is well-screened, there's a lot of planting here, there's a stowaway retaining wall between the two neighbors' properties. The other house is also, you know, pretty well to the north, so it's pretty well protected.
I'm sorry, tell me again why you, why you can't move the AC pad to the back. It seems to me from this diagram, it would be no closer to the beach than, you know, than it is now. If you just moved the caddy corner.
Yeah, again, we were just trying to minimize the disruption, that's all.
I just don't know what you mean by that. I'm just trying to understand. When you say minimize the disruption?
Because we're only excavating for the addition, excavating for the wells.
Right.
Having to excavate for the pad only adds to that piece.
Why would you have to excavate for the pad?
Just to set it level. Entrench the...
I think at least three of us, I don't share what our feelings, we know, I mean, at least three of us are questioning why that has, had to be adding to the encroachment and requiring other variances.
Okay.
I'm very much questioning that as well.
So, we can move it to the back. If we can get a conditional approval, then we move it to the rear, then we're okay with that.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Everybody else all right with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, with that revision, I'll move the approval of the application. I don't think these are major intrusions, and they don't require major variances. I think your proposed coverage variance after all the work you do is 13%, which is not a number that normally gives...
It's all, they're all minimal.
Too much trouble. A little bit, yeah, 15% is 13%. But I think if you agree as a condition of approval to move the air conditioning pad so it is not in the side yard encroachment area, that, on that condition, I'll move to approve the application. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Can you jump in while we vote for the right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Can I make a comment, Bruce? Just picking up on your comment about the front yard setback. Exactly, last week, it runs longer, smaller house, just as a matter of principle, I think it's worth noting that there may be circumstances where the setback actually is less, but it is much more intrusive. That's not the case here, but I don't want somebody coming to us and say, you know, they moved the setback in one foot and now it's 50 feet long instead of 10 feet long, and you let this guy do this, so why don't you let us do this?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a point of consideration. A minimal width increase here. How much wider will the front covered landing?
I'm going to say it's probably about six feet. It's going from a four-foot width to a 10-foot width.
Okay. All right. I mean, you got, I would guess what's there now is probably 14, but I did not have my slide for my... Peter, try to answer anything else over there. Okay, thank you. I'll get letters out on these when I can.
And we'll get the mailings.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next is Rogers and Frank on the end of Shady Lane. One more interesting visits I've ever had. Driving along to the Eagle to the back of chickens.
Oh, yeah, were the twins there or was it...
No. Probably would have been more. Here we go.
Hi, sorry. A little early, huh?
Yeah, we're just barely getting up here.
Okay. Hi.
Would you get to see your...
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. How's it going?
My name is Brandon Stewart, representing Michael Lewis Architects, and also the owners, Brook Bridges, and here, and Andre Frank, owners of property at Three Center Lane. So, just some background on the project. This is the final phase of three phases that began in 2013 on this property. This third and final phase, the main part of it is, is opening up the shed dormer and finishing, fortunately, the attic. So, in some of the earlier phases of construction, springboard piping was planned and a stair was planned so that this could be the final piece.
You haven't been before the building board before. You've been before the building for a priori, if that is right.
I've been, yeah, I've been before 33 Matheson Park, I think was the last.
I don't mean you personally, this project.
Oh, this project.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, this project's not been before this one.
Okay. One of the things we don't like particularly is where people stage it so they can have three separate times, and each one was less dramatic than the whole thing.
As far as I know, the only previous variance that we could find is a youth variance in 2066 on this property. So, this will be the first other than that one. So, yeah, again, this shed dormer popping up in the rear of the house. The other thing that's been proposed is an upgrade to the front porch, which you can see currently rather thickly, going up to this nondescript front door. The intention is to kind of level that off with some planterys and a front porch, covered front porch that matches the width of the house.
From the front door to the other side, right?
Matching, matching the width from, of the whole front of the house that you see as you approach it.
Okay, but the stairs are there now, we're going to be taking out?
Yes. Okay. So, in order to, in keeping with the style of a farmhouse and pulling this, this front covered porch out at that same width, the existing house lies, I think it's 1.3 feet in the side setback. It's a fairly odd situation with the property line. We kind of did some sleuthing during the planning board. The property line, you can see, runs right down the middle of the driveway. This was because we found there's an old easement for the property above to always maintain access for him to be able to have a driveway to carry a house to live back there. So, because of that, the, the, when you're on the site, it feels like the property line should be at this, this tall retaining wall that bounds the driveway, when in fact, the property line runs right down the length of the driveway. So, this, this creates a situation where the edge of the house is sitting that one foot, 1.3 feet in the side setback.
Okay. So, what you propose to do with the front porch extends to the same extent into the side yard?
Correct, so it doesn't have, it does not increase the non-conformance. It merely matches the width of the house. So, there is, again, a 1.3-foot strip of this covered front porch that lies within the side yard.
Good.
So, that's, that's the one reason we're here. The other is, we look up at it. Not much to see on the, on the plan. You can see there's just this little strip that's added of usable floor space to be added. You can see the ceiling height, the current ceiling height reaches seven foot six, right about at the ridge of the, of the roof. So, this will create some, some much more usable space for the, for the owners. On the elevations, you can see it in profile, and this heavy dotted line is the 35-foot mark above the lowest grade, which is found on the, on this, this corner of the house here.
Are the vertical where those present stairs are located?
No, the, the present stairs are in the front of the house. The lowest grade is in the rear of the house.
That, that really slips back, that lots look back.
Yes.
But then it levels off, I think, doesn't it?
Yeah, the house is located, we'll see a topo map on the next sheet here, but the house is located roughly on one of the very slow steers parts of the site. So, you can see, again, we're not increasing the non-conformance with regards to height. We're just pulling the, the new shed dormer off just below what the current range of the house is, and you can see that that lies above that allowable 35-foot mark.
So, it's above 35 feet and is measured, but not as high as your existing roof line?
Correct. The existing roof line from the lowest grade is 39.3, and so we're departing our shed dormer from just below that mark.
Okay. So, here can I simply make the shed dormer to the rear of the house?
Correct.
Then why don't you describe what is to the rear of the house?
There's, you can see it in the site map. The house is located fairly far back on the site. That shed dormer is, is pointing that way. It's just heavily wooded, and then there's, I think, glimpses of Downingwood Pond. Only in the winter. Uh-huh. Beyond.
I mean, there's not a lot of houses and homes.
We have a couple acres between us and Downingwood, and that's the closest thing to the property. And the topo, again, it continues to slope down as you go back. We looked at various dormer options on the front of the house, but they all seemed blessing keeping with, with the farmhouse style, so we figured in the back it would be more appropriate.
I think it makes it easier to approve because it's less... The letter Mr. Lewis sent, your colleague, makes this sound a lot more complicated. I know.
He said, "The, the owners are proposing a recreation room addition at the cellar level and a kitchen renovation on the first floor." None of that has anything to do with it.
Not with variances, that's correct.
Okay.
They're proposing a shed dormer, which you just discussed. And, and proposing a new front porch, which you discussed first, any short stone retaining wall with new platters, and that's to be outside the front porch.
Yes.
Right.
So that the front porch doesn't become too imposing vertically as you approach.
Okay.
You, you don't need a variance for the dormer, for that, excuse me, for the retaining wall, do you?
No.
Okay. You, you mentioned five things you're doing, only two of them.
Right, I understand. They all affected the planning board, but two of them affect this, this board, which is the dormer and the front porch.
Okay.
Side setback.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, I was interrupting you. I thought I saw what I was reading.
It's, it's important. It's in the package.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, that started out.
No, no, I did see.
Five or six.
I did see it.
I did see it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I said, I saw this is going to be really complicated.
And the thing we discovered with, with this, I'm sure you're familiar with the, there's an exception in the code about, there's certain conditions under which you can count the height of your building from average grade instead of from the lowest grade. And what it is, is if your main roof is slopedly, or steeply sloped enough, and if more than half of your, of the buildable area of the site is fifteen percent slope or greater, then you're allowed to count from average grade. The first time we went for the planning board, we took, we understood buildable area to mean the building footprint, which in that case, you can see more than half of the house sits on fifteen percent slopes, in which case we would be able to count that from average grade, in which case we would not need a variance. We were, it was explained to us by Ed and Doug Han that it actually means the buildable area within the setbacks. And so with this, a lot of this size, you can see, it's, it's almost like you're penalized for having all of this lot in front with not steep slopes. So we're technically not eligible for that rule, but we initially thought we would be. So that's, that's what brings us.
So you're not pressing that.
More to the height variance.
Right. Okay. I think it's all I can, we're going to approve it, we'll just approve it without getting into that account.
We don't want that as a precedent in other cases.
Right. Okay.
Can I ask you to come back to the setback issue? Can you go back to that drawing and just show me? I think I get it. The, the only part that's going to be, it's going to encroach beyond the thirteen point one, which is existing, is this retaining wall, is that right?
Um, no, the retaining wall is permitted to intrude. What is not permitted to intrude is the covered porch slash.
I heard you talking about the turning of the property line, but that doesn't seem to impact the coverage. I mean, it doesn't affect where the, the, that's what I'm confused by. I looked, I can't see that part, and I can't see the slope, so I'm in trouble, but, but.
Right, so this, this heavy dotted line is the required setback.
Right.
The highlighted portion is the proposed line within the.
But you're extended all the way out here anywhere, already exceeding this required setback, and you're sort of staying on that same line.
Correct.
Okay.
And these other lines, you see, these are existing stone curves, and then this will be the proposed retaining wall, which aren't permitted.
So the, the fact that the property line kind of angles is interesting, but not really relevant.
Correct.
All right, I was confused by that.
Okay. So the, let me show you this. The extent to which you approach now, the area between this dotted line and, and the end.
The edge of the house, yep.
Right there.
That's right.
And you say, you're telling us that's about a foot.
Just over a foot.
Okay. Looks more generous on your, on your drawing, but that's, that's okay. Might be a little over. Well, the hardest part of this the other day was, was finding the house.
Oh yeah.
Because you had the number three covered by a Christmas decoration. It was pretty, pretty depussittous up here.
And, and if you try to Google a map, it, it looks like no road goes to the house.
It's private lane, yeah.
Yep. So employees from out of that, it was all, you know, much, much easier.
Except for the fact, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, as described initially, I think this was an application that was going to give us a lot of trouble, but when you reduce the application from five items to two, it's a little better. And the encroachment into the side yard, I mean, again, I, I saw the, the front porch, I see the stairs leading down, the fact that nobody's had a, an accent there as far as we were told so far is a good thing, but not to be depended on. And I think it's going to be safer, better looking, and not one additional encroachment in my view. And then putting the dormer on the back for nobody playing to see it, unless they're from the village and trying to see it. I think minimizes the impact of that as well. So a long-winded way of saying that, I will give the application, I will approve it. Do I have a second? Second.
Scott? Yes, I agree.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Are you wearing the second one too?
Sure.
Okay.
You can step down where you can go.
Thank you so much.
Bye.
Thank you. For the record, again, Brandon Stewart, representing Michael Lewis Architects, and the owners at Sixteen Birthplace, Jared and Yvonne Luthy. This application is proposing three areas of new work. One is a, a small dining room addition on the rear of the house. Another is the squaring off of this existing semicircular front porch. And the last of which is some reworking of the existing stone locks to simplify them at the front of the house. The existing house and associated coverage is thirty-three percent available. So even though we are, with the, with the reworking of the stone lock and the other improvements that we're proposing, even though there's a net decrease in coverage, we're, we're required to apply for the variance for coverage. The other thing at play is that you can see the required front setback line runs almost straight through the middle of the house. So, meaning the front of, the whole half of the front of the house is existing non-conforming into the front setback. So even though we're not increasing the non-conformance with this newly constructed front porch, again, we're required to apply for the setback variance.
And you're not, you're not increasing it because the extent to which it intrudes under the front yard is the same as your existing porch?
Correct.
Again, it's going to be squared off a little wider.
Correct.
Right.
About the same overall debt as the existing. So not much to show on the other side, but here you can see in elevation, here's that rear dining room addition, which is shorter than the rest of the house. And here you can see the squared off front porch and the existing one to be removed. In this photograph, you can see that the dining room addition is going to inhabit this space here. So it's going to take the place of a portion of this existing stone patio, which is currently counted, counting towards our coverage. So it's replacing coverage with coverage. And in the front, again, there's a, there's a net decrease in coverage with the stone lock and the front porch.
Okay. It, it looks like you've got four changes. Two of them add to coverage and two of them decrease the coverage, so your net decrease is about.
Forty, forty square feet, I thought.
I was going to ask you.
Yeah.
The, the increase of fifty-seven square feet on structures is because of what? The expansion of the kitchen?
Dining room, yes.
Dining room, sorry.
Okay.
And then on walks, you're decreasing by forty-nine square feet because as you look out from the front porch, the walk down to the driveway is longer than what you proposed the walk to be straight out.
Correct.
All right. Okay. So that, you're saving forty-nine square feet with that.
Yes.
And you're reducing the patio by fifty-seven square feet because the existing blue stone patio is where your addition is going to be. And we're taking the patio out and increasing the addition.
So zero net change in that area.
Okay. And the porch is plus twenty-nine, is that the front porch?
Correct.
How do you get to twenty-nine? It doesn't seem like that much.
Um, that, if you look at this, it's basically the area of this little triangle and this little triangle. Because the existing porch is already counted as coverage, so we're just proposing that triangle of addition and that triangle of addition. If that makes sense.
I'm trying to see how that adds twenty-nine square feet.
Um, yeah, I mean, just, I think if you just subtract that semicircle from the rectangle, that's, that's what's left over. Because the existing covered porch is forty-eight, the proposed is seventy-seven. And so you take one way, you put back the other.
The math, the math works because that doesn't look.
It doesn't look like it.
Doesn't look that much.
Yeah.
So, okay, well, I, I, I think this is a, you know, well-explained application, and I understand what you're trying to do, and I don't think these modifications are very, very significant. There's, there's one problem with the application, though. There is a flag in the front of the house.
Oh.
Which indicates that there were Patriots fans in the house.
That's true.
But we'll have to move to that.
Yeah.
The Rams don't belong there, so I don't know why.
Jared is from Boston, so unfortunately.
Explain a lot. Okay. On the merits, I think this application is okay, and I, I will approve it. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. Go up to the left, Evan.
Nonwithstanding their Patriot, yes.
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 I'm a neighbor, so I'm recusing myself, so you don't need my vote. I was prepared to speak as a neighbor if necessary.
That's right, you had no way.
Did you know that they were Patriots fans when you moved?
I live across the street from them, yes.
Hard to justify that, I'll say that.
Jared will enjoy hearing.
I'm not a Patriots fan, but I'm the only person outside of the women except them that doesn't hate the Patriots. But I'm actually rooting for them, because as I say.
The Rams?
Could not be there.
Yep.
There you are.
Enough of the extraneous stuff. Again, letters will come out on virtual applications, but well, we'll try to get to this as we can, but I'm going to be lost out. See what we can make. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that's based on a missed passing interference call?
Yeah, missed.
God. They didn't see it, it didn't happen.
I saw it three times on the replay.
They didn't see it.
All right, last, Mount Merode.
I don't see how they could have missed that.
No, it, it was.
Everyone here, I had twelve feet of, oh, Michael Taylor? Michael Taylor?
Who were you looking for?
It's something. But I can tell you. Two confessions. Basically, I'd been fine finished, this was in a dead fire, but it's for the lot, because I just, I'm just finished working. So finally, I got it going, I put a walkway up to the, this really had existing walkway over here. It stopped over here.
Oh, yeah.
I see. It's in the town.
Okay. No, that's fine, I'll, I'll share the story. Just make sure that it's fine.
Thanks. So the, originally there was an existing walkway here, previous owner, coming up to about here. I added on some plaque stone over here, not knowing that I couldn't do that. And when we finally went to get the final number, it ended up over here. This is over here. Can I see that?
I don't think we have that.
Well, you don't have that.
I mean, we have this.
That's it.
Right.
Yeah, it's the walkway right here.
Oh, right here.
Yeah, yeah, little teeny thing. It was the walkway originally went to here, I added this, and turns out it's more than, I don't know, twenty-two percent over.
Okay. Now, did you do the drawings and all this or something?
No, no. This is done, the engineer, it's also done with this survey by one called Landlink.
Okay. Well, I mean, look, you're, you're over twelve square feet, I'm trying to think how we turn this one down, I don't have a way to do it. But what I, what I really don't, I mean, I just don't understand the, the description. I'll tell you why I was confused.
It's twelve, it's twelve feet over there, coverage for the whole property.
Yeah, no, I, I get that part. When you folks came in nine years ago, the reason you needed a variance then was because.
Because of the garage.
Yeah, wasn't the coverage issue at all?
No, no. It's upstairs in the garage, I want to put a second corner.
Oh, is it?
It was attached to.
Yeah, okay.
That's only up to lock.
Yeah, right, good.
No, it is not, we, we didn't add, need anything except the upstairs in the garage.
At that time, right, right.
And I still didn't touch anything. I removed back to here, I moved, moved a bit here, I moved a lot of it here to reduce it, I moved to, I moved to this, this was originally gravel, I put, it's actually a mulch here now, and then I cut out some of this drug to, to, to.
I guess here's my problem, okay, and I, I'm not making anything particular, a twelve square feet over. But to get to the number you arrived at, you have added a few things and subtracted a few things.
Yes.
And I, I know I, I believe I saw a description of that somewhere, but now I can't.
Yeah, it's, one of these assumptions is.
Some of them were, yeah, some of them are different, but they're still compliant with the side door setback, for example.
Yeah, all the setbacks, we never touched them.
Okay.
All the setbacks. I had to move, I had to move the shim also. I drove my car right there and dragged it over a bunch of feet, so this was within the setback. That was the only thing that, that told me what I do.
Okay, so that is no longer where you have it here.
No, I know, it's correct, see that it's twenty.
Okay. So this. I see, I see, this, this is the setback line, you move it out that way.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so that doesn't change coverage or?
No.
Same thing?
No, same.
All right.
These change.
So what, what, you have a stone retaining wall here.
Okay.
And that's, that's your pass line, right? Is that new?
No, that's all been new. That's been used since I bought the house.
Okay, and the same thing here, stone retaining wall?
Yes.
And I gather that's the same thing, or it doesn't say so?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's been used.
All right. So what, what are you changing or proposing to change, just like to the.
Just, I'm, I'm twelve, I, well, my.
I know you're only twelve feet over, but that's.
Just that one little piece right there.
Just one little piece from here to here, that's all it is.
This is the only thing you're changing?
That's why I added this on.
At the end of the stone wall?
At the end of the stone wall, with the steps, there's two pieces, there are six feet, so each, and those two pieces. And that's what they want me to come up with.
Okay, well, it's nice to see you.
Yeah, I think you guys are thinking this.
You were the, you were the only one who was not home today, I, I went around touring.
Oh.
And I, I had, I've got to tell you, I stood out there with this, promoting for quite a while, trying to figure out what this was about, and came, came to know really conclusion.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not really got much, right?
Okay, so, that's a bad attitude, you may have to take that into account.
Well.
Anybody, anybody else on the board want to ask a question or make a comment? Anybody out there?
No.
You're on the hit list, right? You want to say something?
I had something not concerning this particular issue, but regarding, I thought there was a, be some mentioning of the roadway, zoning, the, the board, or anything like that, or those meetings, or that has nothing to do with this meeting here.
Actually, no, the zoning board is by application, application by application, homeowners come in, there's, you know, zoning rules, they want to do something, and it's not compliant in, there's, you know, zoning rules, they wanna do something, and if they're not compliant with the rules, they stay elsewhere.
Nice thing.
Nothing difficult. What you're probably looking at is a trustees meeting.
Above, above pay grade.
Yeah, where they, they actually get paid. Where, um, there is a, there'll be an issue about changing zoning.
Correct.
As you say, especially at the north end of the bigger properties, I know that's on your agenda at some point.
When are those meetings, do you know? I mean, I know the website changed, so it's very confusing compared to what dermington.gov website used to be.
I think they're also Tuesdays.
Tuesdays also.
You know, I saw some people going into town hall, so they may be in there.
Oh, maybe, yeah, you may wanna go in the front door.
It's only 15 minutes into the hour.
Knowing these guys, that's.
Absolutely, yeah.
I had a record here, got it, big building.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Take a personal.
Oh, no problem, you're right.
All right, thanks. And, uh, Mr.? I'll write you a letter, Jim.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it.